Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll call the meeting to order and let's do the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Susan, do you want to do roll call, please?
Councilmember Bama.
Here.
President Passardi.
Here.
Councilmember Dolan.
Here.
Councilmember Helmut.
Here.
Councilmember Kenneth.
Fairly.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda unless there's any changes.
As long as there's no changes, they'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
I have a motion by Helmut, supported by Kenneth, all in favor.
Aye.
All same sign. We don't have any presentations, we don't have any public hearings. Call to the public on non-agenda items.
Hello, Dave Gerber, 24 Hovee. About 10 days ago, I was minding my own business and started thinking about dispatch. I'm not here to change anybody's mind. I'm not really here to offend anybody. But as a citizen, there were a couple of things that stuck in my thoughts. First, when I was DDA, I believe we wanted to sell some parcels of land and we had to get voter approval to sell those pieces of property, $25,000 or more, I think. It seems like we're going at a break next ba-- it's no secret how I feel about dispatch, so I'm not gonna act like I'm a disinterested observer, because I'm not. I don't know all the details, I don't know if there was a public hearing on the topic to see what the citizens had felt about the dispatch change. I don't know if there was any talk about a possible millage for the dispatch. I do know that I feel like this is an unaccountable decision by the council. I appreciate your services, I appreciate that you're willing to step up and to serve. But if this goes through, which looks like it's gonna go through, and the voters decide, you know what, you did something I didn't like, the deal still goes through, you're unaccountable for the decision. The only person I would consider accountable is Sue, if she's an elected official.
We don't know.
You're appointed though without a vote, correct? I didn't-- when were you voted on? I told you, I don't know everything, and that's gonna be obvious.
Two years ago, and we're up for election this November.
Okay, all right, so I stand corrected on that. Has there been a public meeting on the dispatch, a public hearing or a public meeting? What's that?
During the budget deliberation, it was primary.
There wasn't a public hearing, it was discussed, but there was--
It was discussed, but was there a public for the sake of?
As a matter of fact, we did have a public special meeting, at which point this was voted on.
Several.
So while I do respect your opinion, and I do respect your tenor, I would suggest prior to speaking about a topic, you educate yourself about it.
Thank you for the correction, Mr. Dolan. I appreciate that.
There was no public hearing pursuant to notice.
And that's what I'm talking about. And no other options. And as far as-- were you elected or appointed, sir?
I was appointed.
Okay, so you're unelected running for election.
The last time I checked, this is a public comment, it's not a question-answer session. So if you have a comment, I would suggest that you make it, otherwise I'd ask you to have a seat.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Unaccountable decisions bother me, it seems like this is an unaccountable decision. And I believe that if we were to say that, yes, I was responsible for the dispatch to be transferred over to Oakland County, and the public said that they didn't like it, you are not going to get re-elected or elected, and it's an unaccountable decision because the decision goes through without a public hearing. That's my comment. I'm sorry if I offended you, that was not my intent, but to speak as a voter who seems to be frustrated by my inability to speak to that issue if that is a platform for somebody. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave. Anybody else?
Who cares what we're talking about?
Okay.
Decisions like this are made every day, especially at the federal government. I know there was a healthcare bill passed, went through, nobody was accountable. As a matter of fact, you had to load on it before you could read it. So, I mean, this stuff happens all the time, it's your job, and I appreciate the job you're doing.
Thank you, Bill.
I think you all know that the decisions you make are not necessarily going to be the most popular decisions during your tenure on council. With that being said, I also think that you should be making decisions, and I believe you are making decisions, based on factual information that you have, and not necessarily based on popularity or the necessity to get re-elected. So, congratulations on that.
Thanks, Bob. Anybody else? Okay, go on to the consent agenda. 7A, receive and file items, correspondence, letters, reports, minutes.
I'll make a motion to receive and file the consent agenda A items.
Second.
We have a motion by Helmut, supported by Bama, all in favor.
Aye.
All same sign. And we are at 7B, which is the approved items. And I know we don't have to announce what the bill approval is, but I would continue to like to have that done.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items B, including the bills in the amount of $168,311.43.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Helmut, supported by Bama. Susan, do you want to do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Helmut.
Yes.
Councilmember Kenneth.
Yes.
Councilmember Bama.
Yes.
Councilmember Dolan.
Yes.
President Passardi.
Yes. Okay, 8, unfinished old business. A is the ad hoc committee report on the dispatch transition. I don't know who wants to start, Bob, Joe, here, Rose?
Well, we can-- I can give a sort of a synopsis. We sent a termination letter in accordance with the contract terms with Orion. We had beginning figures put into place, and then we had a meeting with the staff from the county here at the village offices, which I think went very well. The feedback from that meeting was significantly positive from the county standpoint, indicating that they thought that the transition was moving as rapidly as they had seen it in any other community who was transitioning. Since then, I know that the manager has put together some figures and has got them out to the committee for review, which we should be able to present at the next working session. Those figures go through a breakdown of some of the informal discussions that we've had relating to staffing going forward, how much per hour, how many hours per week, and all of those figures, and I know Rose worked on a lot of those figures as well, and they're now in a big spreadsheet that I think Rose has, I think Eric, you have it, I have it, and I think the village manager has it, and we'll be fine-tuning that for the next presentation. Yesterday, I sent a letter off to the police union indicating that there's a provision in the current union contract that anticipates the dismantling transition of dispatch, indicating that we believe that that has been triggered for the January 2017 date, and that we would like to meet concerning the balance of those provisions. The letter that was required to start the ball rolling at the county for purposes of the transition, the wording of which is standard format issued by the county, was put into letter format, signed by the village council president, and signed by the village manager, and issued back to the county to start, which just authorizes them to start the process. So the process is moving very quickly, the committee seems to be functioning very well, and there should be a financial report to the council at large at the second meeting this month. Eric, anything to add?
No.
Rose? Joe?
I heard it was really positive, some feedback from--
The county?
Joe and everyone, yes.
Great, yeah, the meeting went very well.
Thank you, Rose and Eric.
And the chief of police participated in the meeting and stayed after the meeting to work on some details with the county staff that I think they appreciated.
I move to receive and file the report.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Bama, supported by Helmut, all in favor.
Aye.
All same sign. Personal policies manual and personnel procedures manual, including social media policy and nepotism policy.
Yes, councilman, I was asked to separate the policies from the procedures, and this is the first cut of trying to do that, because some of them are part of both, so some of them I left in both manuals, and we do need to have review, the attorney needs to review it further, and there may be some other issues. There is one issue in particular, I didn't want to have us address it, maybe not necessarily tonight, I mean, the next workshop session in two weeks regarding negotiations with ASME that might impact on how we consider the non-union provision, and that's gonna be discussed in the closed session later this evening. So I would ask the council to consider setting this aside until the next meeting, until which time we can refire the refine and address the proposed ASME, how it might impact or not this policy, now procedure.
I'd like to set this aside until our workshop, and so we can refine and go over, make sure we have the procedures out of the personnel in the proper documents.
Second.
We have a motion by Bama, supported by Dolan, all in favor.
Aye.
All same sign. Okay, now, new business, A, lease agreement with the evening group.
This council, you have before you a lease agreement that would provide for a monthly rent of $250 to be paid by the evening group. Recall, this was part of stimulus, I think we had an offer from the church that rents the community room for the same amount, and the AA group said that we would match that opportunity, like to match that offer, and they did agree to this, and the terms provided herein, it's been drafted by our attorney, and the amount's $250, starting with this month, August, that they would start paying that. Up to this point, they've been providing, they will continue to maintain the restroom and cleaning and maintenance, there's nothing we do out there, they just use the space to maintain and provide the supplies and materials out there.
This is essentially the same terms, only you're getting paid now.
If there's no questions, I'll make a motion to approve the lease agreement with the evening group at $250 a month, and authorize the village manager to sign the contract, subject to review by the village attorney.
We have a motion by Helmut, supported by Kenneth. Susan, do you want to do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kenneth.
Yes.
Councilmember Bama.
Yes.
Councilmember Dolan.
Yes.
President Passardi.
Yes.
Councilmember Helmut.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, B, scheduling public hearing for, number one, the rental inspection ordinance, and number two, the mowing enforcement ordinance. Bob, do you want to start with the--
The rental inspection ordinance, if you recall, we visited this issue several moons ago, and we had a very long version of a rental inspection ordinance that was met with some degree of opposition. This is a streamlined version of a registration and inspection ordinance with a focus on registration, which would allow your public safety, police, fire, and others to have knowledge of where rental premises are. The triggering of an inspection is now conditioned a little more fairly than perhaps the first version had been, and there is provisions in there that council wanted where there's no inspection fee if the complaint giving rise to the inspection turns out to be a bogus claim. This is about as streamlined as we could make this ordinance. The goal, the primary goal of the ordinance, again, is to get a registration in place so that the village officials and safety personnel have knowledge of where people are renting. Your building official has reviewed this and really likes this version, your outside planning and zoning people like this version, your police chief likes this version, and who's usually sitting right there, your fire chief likes this version. So we had decided at the last work session that this version was ready, subject to a few changes, to come back to council for the scheduling of a public hearing, and that's what's before us this evening.
It's my understanding, too, that the code officer is--
Yes, yes, and he, I actually sent you his review memo, which was very timely written.
I'd like to schedule the public hearing for the proposed rental inspection for Tuesday, September 13th at 6:30.
Support.
We have a motion by Bama, supported by Helmut, all in favor.
Aye.
All same sign. Okay, the mowing weed ordinance.
Counsel, what's presented to you this evening is a strengthening of our mowing enforcement ordinance to clarify the fees that would include actual labor costs, fringe costs, equipment costs, off costs, plus administrative fee of $25. In addition, there would be a fee for violations of $100 for the first offense, $200 for the second offense, I say offense, not office, and $300 for the third offense. And thereafter, I propose that we set a scheduled public hearing for this ordinance amendment for the next regular council meeting, September 13th.
And they are getting a ticket, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Citation, yeah. Citation ticket.
Right.
If there's no other questions, I'll move to schedule a public hearing for a mowing ordinance amendment for Tuesday, September 13th at 6:30 PM.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Helmut, supported by Kenneth, all in favor.
Aye.
All same sign. Okay, next, we have C, appointment of ad hoc committees. We have the water bottling committee with Rose Bama, Mo Helmut, and Susan Nassar, the cell tower tenants, Tom Kenneth, Bob Davis, Joe Young, and the economic development committee, which would be Sue Passardi, Eric Dolan, Joe Frost, Joe Young, and we need to add McKenna because that was discussed at the workshop.
Chris Corey, you mean?
Chris Corey.
Or you mean John?
Yeah, or whoever happens to come. We're gonna make the meetings, try and make them on the days that he's here working, and if not, then he just won't attend, and we'll give him information.
Counsel, if you remember during our training, we talked about the use of committees. There would be no standing committees, we would have ad hoc committees, get things done, have streamlined purposes, reporting back to council for action, moving things along. This is the start of that.
I'll make a motion to establish the previously mentioned ad hoc committees with updates provided at regular monthly council meetings.
Second.
We have a motion by Helmut, supported by Dolan, all in favor.
Aye.
I think CJ had a--
I'm sorry.
I wondered if you guys could give a summary, because obviously you discussed this in the work section, but the regular meeting is to what, just a little thing of what these committees are regarding.
The water bottling plant was to, well, let me start off by saying this, CJ, they're all committees looking to create economic flow in the village and to assist the village in the budget process. We were gonna look into a water bottling plant because there has been some communities in Michigan who have taken their water facilities that have excess capacity and have turned it into revenue for the local government. We have no plans or set or anything, but somebody's going to explore that. The cell tower tenants is, as you know, we have space left on the water tower for five more tenants, and we are now actively pursuing tenants because of the revenue stream, and the same is with general economic development.
You're welcome. Okay, and the last one.
Kenneth, water.
Did you--
What?
Did you have something, Tom?
We heard that.
I don't think he has anything.
Okay. The sewer summer credit for non-residential customers.
Yes, council, this is presented for consideration, we have a number of business people that have gardens and lawns that they've been watering, and they got their bill recently, and they're asking why the water sewer credit only applies to residential, and that's why the ordinance was written back in 1990, by the way. It provided going for residential, provided it would be the average of the nine months prior to June, July, and August, which is now what the amended our ordinance to reiterate and have a form for, again, residential properties, that they can apply, they apply every year, and that the sewer usage would be based on the previous nine months previous to June, July, and August, and they would be given a credit only on the sewer amount, recognizing they may be sprinkling their lawn, or flowers, or their swimming pool, filling their pool or something. We've had some business people, including our own fire department, express consideration of this matter, that's why it's presented this evening. They do have the option, commercials property, to have a second meter for sprinkling, which we have maybe less than 10, that do have that. There are some condominium associations that have sprinklers, some industrial properties that do, but not very many, but they'd have to pay for having a second meter. There would only be water charged only, no sewer, but that's the only other option, and again, this is presented for your consideration this evening.
Rose?
I'd like to see them all have separate meters, all commercials should have separate meters for their water.
I agree.
For sprinkling.
For sprinkling, their lawns and their flowers and whatever, but if they want the credit, they can have a separate meter.
What's the downside?
Cost.
Which way?
What's the downside of what?
There is a meter cost, it's approximately, depending on the size, like from 150 to probably 210 for a three-quarter to inch and a half, and there is a monthly charge of $18.10. The township does do it for the cemetery, the schools do it, Oxford Marketplace, Rite Aid.
No, I know there is that cost, but would that be, that's not a village cost, the point of that, number one, and number two, it allows us to control the water and regulate it. I just don't see a downside for the village.
To have the second meter? I agree.
No, right, right. The cost, by the way, that was just for the meter, you have to obviously install it, and the charge would be based on the size of the meter.
Yeah.
So it's half-inch or three-quarter inch, and it is 1810 at the moment, but--
During an installation--
And the DBW would have to read the second meter, which may or may not be right next to the first meter.
Yeah, well, they--
Right.
I'm just saying to return on investment.
Absolutely. Bill?
Joe, could you explain the procedure for residential to get this credit? I just set it up on the website, right?
Yeah, there's a form that's required to be filled out, and alls you do is put your name and address on it, and you'll get the county, and you'll get the sewer credit for those three months, so you have to actually apply to have it, because not everyone may be sprinkling their lawn, for example.
Or swimming pool.
They may not have a lawn to sprinkle.
When you pick up the form?
Yeah, it's on the website or here at the village.
I can't find it on the website.
It's something called sewer summer credit, it's right on the homepage, it's also--
Or they're in the offices.
Yeah, sewer summer credit form.
Do we make residents who have sprinkler systems put in a second meter?
No.
It's a fair option.
Do we make people that have swimming pools put in a second meter?
It's a fair option.
No. No.
And I guess my question is, why are we making commercial people do the same thing? I look at it as our expectation that people keep up their properties and have them look nice and enhance the village, and if we're not making everybody do it, I don't know why we're singling out one segment to have to pay for the second meter.
That's the argument that the commercial entities presented.
Oh, wow.
And I would agree with that.
That's the position, is they wanted to be treated in a manner similar--
Right.
--to residential, which is a formula, really, that is filled out by way of a paper application.
Bill, did you want to?
Built on 14 Dennison, is there a reason the village couldn't assign a unit factor for each, for all homes? There's 10 state standards that, you know, the engineers use, that, you know, typical home uses 300 or 400 gallons of water, and then just have one set price that the village people would have to pay, and then whatever their meter is, is what it is, and you just pay for the water. Because you must have a conversion where, you know, if they hit that certain gallons per month, that now you bill them for sewer. It would just make it simpler, just to have one for a household, some households are gonna have five people, some are gonna have two people, I think they average it out, and whatever's on their meter is what they pay, you don't give this credit stuff.
I think that's the way the village was.
Our previous to changing to meter size, your water rate included the first 2,000 gallons, but the sewer rate included the first 8,333 gallons for that very reason. That was how it was set up in the beginning of time, I think. But then we changed two years ago the rate study to meter size to better reflect the cost of providing the water system services to the users, and we charge everyone for any flow, and they don't get anything included in their base rate book. What you're suggesting is saying, for example, allowing, you know, $5,000, $5,000 gallons of sewer, for example, or $8,000, whatever the number might be, as part of that base, which would apply to all customers, not just residential.
I just think, I'm not an accountant, but to bill these people would be a lot quicker to just send each, here's a sewer, this is what your sewer is every month, and here's what your water, here's what it is, you know, if you, you've got to set them out for the first whatever cubic feet of water, and then the people that, you know, you shouldn't penalize someone to try to make their house and home nicer in the village, and right now you are, because when I use more, I have to pay for added sewer charge. Just make it simple.
Well, I would just like to say that I would love to only pay for three or four-- Well, I would just like to say that I would love to only pay for 300 or 400 gallons of water. Bill, I use more water, I would love to pay your water bill. I used
I'd like you to pay my water bill.
15,000 gallons a month.
Wow.
And that's not, I don't sprinkle my grass. I do water my vegetables, I don't sprinkle my grass.
Too many teenagers.
I use an obscene amount of water, and that's just the way we live, that's just the way it is. I can almost guarantee no one else in this room is as stupid as I am, and I, when it comes to my water bill, it's just, it's not fair for you to pay the same amount of sewer as I do. It just isn't.
No, but it would even out, because you're going to pay a certain amount for your sewer, and you're going to pay X amount for all the water that you use.
But I use way more sewer than you do.
But it'll average out. You've got some homes with two people.
Right.
You've got some with six.
It would be my opinion, with a village that is struggling for finances in some regards, that we would wanna create an environment which is as business-friendly as possible, and we would wanna have parity with what we have already established with our residents. We want the businesses to be presentable, we want them to feel as if they're being represented equally as residents. I would suggest that what has been proposed, which is on the lines of parity in this current climate, would be something that would be prudent to be researched in the future if we wanna change it. I understand it was, yeah, strike that, I'm not gonna go there.
I've seen a lot of businesses, when it rains, you probably don't sprinkle your grass.
Correct.
If you drive down Industrial Drive, when it rains, a lot of those businesses, they're still sprinkling, and I think this might force them to be a little more aware of what they're using their water for. It's, I mean, I love that Industrial Drive is green and beautiful, but they're watering when they don't necessarily have to water, and that's just my opinion.
My opinion is we're trying to create a community which is thriving and desirable. Now, some might determine that the water is not being used prudently, I would suggest that anytime you improve your community, it is being used prudent, in a prudent fashion, and I would suggest that we implement the exact same standards that we impose upon our tax-paying residents as we have for the businesses.
We're also paying taxes.
We're also paying taxes, since...
Not our homestead taxes.
As it's only rained probably four times this summer, there is a certain level of expectation that we have as a village, that individuals maintain some level of standard on their property. In order to do that, they're willing to pay the cost to do it, they just want something that is along the lines of reasonable that the rest of the taxpayers, and I think that's understandable.
I just feel by making them put in a second meter and incurring the cost of not only the meter, but labor costs, is just being punitive. I really do, right? Like I said, I just feel like we have expectations, and for three months, I think that the businesses deserve the same amount of credit or consideration as the residents do. It's my feeling.
So Sue, your thought is to extend the program we offer to the residents to the commercial?
Yes. Susan?
If they do get a second meter, most people start watering their lawns end of April, May, so they would have no sewer on May, June, July, August, September, and October, where if they don't have a second meter, they only get June, July, and August.
Just the three months.
Just the three months. So they really are more financially, it's beneficial to them to have a second meter and get five months as opposed to not. Some of the businesses, like the, I was looking up today for the fire department, they used 85,000, then they went to 185, then they went to 200, and now they are 326,000. They would only get the three months, if they had the second meter, they'd get fully five, and 85,000, where they normally use 7, 8, 9, 10,000, is way more beneficial than just the three months.
And won't this capture some of the apartment complexes?
Most of those are already, most of those, like the condos and some of the larger businesses, they already have a second meter. The township has one for the cemetery, and they don't have much use there. So the second meter actually gives them more benefit than not, even though it seems unfair, it actually is more prudent to have the second meter. The costs are less, depending on your use, of course.
Right, well, you're singling out one of the biggest users, but if you have, say for instance, Houston Kennedy, who has just a small front yard
Yes, yes.
and he wants to keep it up.
Yes.
It's way, and how many of the big users do we have? I mean...
All Industrial Drive, the apartment complexes.
Snyder's Places.
Yeah, White House Court.
White House Court.
The Marketplace.
I would imagine that they already have a second meter, I don't know.
The Marketplace does.
What about White House Court and the other ones?
I don't think they do.
They have several meters there.
Yeah, every business has their own.
Couldn't you make it their choice? Let them make the choice of a second meter or take advantage of the residential program? See, when Susan just explained that, I'm not sure they've all heard that explanation about how the five months averages, so maybe, maybe we should just say that businesses, if you want to go the residential route, go ahead, but...
Based on their use?
Based on your, and then you can distinguish, Sue, among the big and the large, and the small. They can make their own choice, just make it available.
I like that.
I like that idea.
Solomon. Book one.
All right, so...
We could redraft that and bring it back to the next meeting.
Yeah, I'd like to set this aside for bringing it back at the next meeting.
Support, if it needs it.
Okay, we have a motion to set or decide to rework the language to give commercial businesses a choice. Motion by Vamas, supported by Helma. Helma, all in favor?
Aye.
All say aye. Okay, we didn't have any items removed. Public comment?
This is more of a question that probably Joe could answer. When I'm looking at budget forecasting right now for my next fiscal year, which would be '17 through 2020, I'm also looking at the millage rate and the reduction of the millage rate because of the fact that Headley is affecting those millage rates today. I think, well, I, not I think, I know they're being affected because economic forecast countywide is rather positive. With that being said, I don't think the economic forecast, or maybe we're not using the right word, I don't think that the, I'll use that, we'll correct it later if we need to, but the forecast for Oxford is not, the growth, I should say, is not as abundant perhaps as the rest of Oakland County. So, here's my observation, this is what I'm seeing as your library director, and I'm thinking you're probably gonna see the same thing. Because of that, the net revenue that we would see, we're not seeing the net revenue because of the fact that Headley is rolling back the millage rate, we're not offsetting that rollback with economic growth. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, so we're actually seeing a decline in revenue for the next couple of years as a result of that. I'm actually forecasting that we're gonna see that through 2020, and that the economic growth that we're seeing today really won't take effect until probably 2020 or beyond. So is that kind of the trend that you're seeing as well?
Well, the village is in a unique situation, we have three more mills we could levy, so we're not capped. Yes, we have to have a public hearing to roll it back to the current rate, so we have within our limits, the tax authority, to go, to keep rolling back, and not, but we have rolling back.
Restore.
Headley rolls it back, but then we can
Restore it.
have a public hearing, restore it.
Okay.
So we're, in that sense, Sue, we don't have significant, well, if we have increases, that's good, we want increases in our taxable value, but you're right, the increases have been minor, less than 2%, 1% or 2%, even less than that, whereas the county's been going up much more than that.
So Headley?
But in our sense, only because we have that three mill additional levies we could, we could, we at least maintain our revenue stream, we don't lose revenue, we don't gain much.
Okay, but that's only if you have a public hearing and you decide
Of course, of course.
to raise your millage rate, which you've not done at this point.
Which we've done every year.
Okay, okay, just wondering, because if that's not on your radar, I think it should be on your radar.
Oh, definitely.
Okay. The other thing I wanna share is your library directors, we had, we just wrapped up our summer reading program, it was another successful year for us. Our overall numbers of participants, library-wide, were down just slight from the, slightly from the previous year, but our overall number of actual participants who completed the program was up considerably, and our programming numbers were up considerably as well. So the library, your library, is just finishing up another very successful year of summer reading program. And even though I no longer sit with you on council, I just want you to know that I'm still here as your librarian, and if you ever have any questions, or you're in need of something being researched, please don't hesitate to reach out to me personally, because I'm not just the head librarian for the public library in terms of serving the public, but in many ways, I'm your town librarian, so I'm here to serve you as well. So if you personally have things that you need researched as a council or management, don't hesitate to reach out to me, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
By the way, the library never looked better. I was in there a couple weeks ago.
Managers report?
I'll just report that our auditors were in from July 27th and 28th, and completed their preliminary field work, and they'll be coming back, I think it's the third week of September, to finalize their audit.
Taxes are still, they're due on August 31st, so after
Excuse me.
After that, there will be penalties and interest. New cement was poured today in front of the village offices and the sidewalk, it looks very nice. And the MML annual meeting will be held on Mackinac Island in September, and I will get the handout as soon as I receive it, so that everybody, if you want to send a representative.
Tom?
First of all, I, normally I don't fight when people come up here and speak, because I want public opinion. However, the gentleman that came up earlier, I could not be more mad. Not only did he not have any idea what he was talking about, he didn't even know if we were elected, knew no idea that we've been talking about this dispatch, not just for five years, but we've been going over it for six months. I have no idea why he came up here. This is a decision that was made for the village, on behalf of the village, our own Oxford Township is not using our dispatch. We have checked all of our premises, heard both groups had open meetings, public meetings, and why ever and whoever set this gentleman up to come here and say that we are not elected officials and we are not responsible for making these decisions is the most obscure, ridiculous thing that I've ever heard, and I'm, I'm just tired of the politics in this village, 'cause we worked our butt off to make this decision, and we're not the only ones, and that's all I got to say.
Mal?
I'm gonna protest this by saying that I don't believe when a new council comes in, that we should revoke what an old council did. I mean, I might disagree with something that we did, but I'm not necessarily willing to go back just because we have a new member and all of a sudden we have more votes. But I will say, I think Dave Gerber presented a very interesting comment. Tom, weren't you appointed two years ago?
Yeah, he was.
You weren't elected?
He ain't elected.
No.
I was appointed and then elected.
I'll take your word for it, I didn't think you were elected. I mean, I just thought it was a very interesting way to look at it, that of the three votes, one or two were not elected, they were appointed, and perhaps between now and when we have another election, we should keep that in the back of our minds when there is an important decision, that maybe put a little more effort to get more public comment. But that's, like I said, I don't agree in going back, not that there's more votes this way than that way and change in it, but I thought that was a very interesting idea, and it's something we should keep in the back of our minds.
There's no legal distinction
I don't disagree.
Once you're on council.
I don't disagree. Eric's vote, Tom's vote, Sue's vote, Rose's vote, they're all the same, but I thought it was an interesting concept, and I just think it's something we should all think about, and that's it.
Go back, Mal, in time, I mean, when we revisited this a long time ago, we went down the road of crafting, CJ would remember, how many versions of a ballot issue did I craft to try to capture this issue at a ballot?
I know we've been discussing it for a long time.
Eventually, we just made a council decision.
Absolutely. I absolutely agree, and I don't think there's any reason this council couldn't make that decision. I just, it was the way he presented it that I hadn't thought of it before, and that's all I'm gonna say.
Rose?
Well, I'd like to thank Joe Higgins, landscaping our Lake Orion. He came into our village and did one of our residents' property and made it look very nice, at no cost to the resident, and he's also doing one in Lake Orion the same way. He provided his services, cutting shrubs, weeding, doing weeds, and I just thought it was a nice gesture of his company to come in and do that.
Could I inquire who the resident was?
Would that be Mr. Bailey by chance?
Yes.
Okay.
He was not the, it's my understanding they also did...
There were 20 people nominated out there to have their properties done. Mr. Bailey did receive 39 votes of the Oxford residents, or Oxford-Lake Orion residents that nominated and they had his property done.
How ironic.
The next lady was at 29 votes, and went on down below that, so I just thought it was nice of this guy just to come in and do something like that. I didn't wanna say a name, only because...
Perception?
It was, no, it was just in recognition of his company wanting to do something for a resident.
Well, I don't think it's public comments.
Eric?
I have numerous comments, yes, and, of course, that has thrown me off. I think, well, first of all, I'd like to start with the Lone Ranger Parade, and benefit, phenomenal. What an outstanding weekend for the Village of Oxford. I would like to thank all of the residents and anyone in this council who actually donated to the Village of Oxford and participated. It was a phenomenal event, a great evening for all, and I think the community as a whole benefited. Secondly...
community as a whole benefited. Secondly, since the topic of village beautification has come up, it is my understanding that the way this matter initially was proposed is that Mr. Bailey was singled out as the one individual to have his property beautified. As a result, there was some question as to whether there would be a negative appearance, favoritism based on Mr. Bailey's past council positions and future council candidacy, which, best of luck, I hope it works out well. I think perception is reality. We have an organization that now has a potential candidate running for office, and this village is now actively seeking benefit to Mr. Bailey. I have been told that Mr. Bailey, in the past, has been in a significant state of disrepair in his home. He has violated numerous aspects of the village code, and I suspect that there was a reason that this was done. I suspect that we solicited a business to improve Mr. Bailey's aesthetic, the aesthetics of his home, so that he could present as a better council candidate. I also would like to bring forward a second concern that I have. It has also come to my attention that we have village employees, that being the manager and potentially others, who picked up Mr. Bailey, drove him on village finances and village cost to select and pick up individual petition votes and signatures for his petition. It was explained to me that it was a hot day and we were just doing Mr. Bailey a favor. However, to me, it suggests that we have village employees who are actively involved in the political process, who have wavered from all policy and procedure in order to select an individual that they would like to advance their agenda. That's troubling to me. With that said, over the last month or two, I feel council has advanced a very effective and efficient agenda. We have advanced numerous committees. We have advanced an economic development committee. We have discussed two other committees, which, with any fortune, are going to bring in a positive revenue stream for this village, which they are needed. The reason I got involved in this village was because in just a very short period of time, I was able to see that this council was paralyzed with ineffectiveness. It was paralyzed with an inability to an advanced agenda, and it was paralyzed with economic problems. Since then, I feel like our council members have worked together. We have focused our efforts and our resources. We have made decisions that are tough. Tough decisions are not positive. Despite that, I have a significant problem with the leadership of the village, two-thirds of it. Despite the fact that council has been able to advance an agenda, on numerous instances, council has been provided with false information intentionally. They have been provided with false numbers. They have been thwarted at numerous instances in order to advance the dispatch transition. And I, for one, as a taxpaying resident of this village, am not satisfied with reverting back to the poor decisions this village has made in the past. I am concerned that if we do not stay on the straight and narrow that we have, the village will fall into receivership and end up the township. Everyone says they don't want that. However, every action that is different or from the past leads to that. Mr. Bailey, I am glad that they took care of your yard. I hope that you find pride in your homeownership. I hope in the future meetings, you will be able to stay awake if you end up on this council, because the two meetings I've seen you in, you haven't found that ability yet. I'm not sure what kind of a leader you would be with the ability to stay awake during a meeting. That's all I have.
Sue?
I have to rebuttal something there. The Facebook post said Joe's Lawn Care would like to get back to the community by offering one family member going through hard times and doing a makeover. The makeover can include trimming shrubs, weed bedding, fresh mulch, mowing the yard, or anything else that might be needed. Nobody singled out Mr. Bailey to do this. It says you could nominate yourself. People don't like to talk about their problems, what would help pick the right family, if you could do a short story or deserve somebody who like to be doing. Several people said Dave Bailey would be a nice improvement to have his house done. Nobody said that Dave Bailey was going on council or anything about him being on council to have his yard done.
As an individual responsible for making intelligent decisions, I choose to get my information from places other than Facebook. If that's how you govern this village, that's part of the problem.
Think of it as...
All right, enough, enough. We're not, we're not going to rehash this. Please. All right, my turn.
Will we have a comment?
Excuse me? No, no.
After the closed session, will we have public comments?
No.
We will not.
Excuse me. I have a question, and I've brought this to your attention before, Joe. This came property management. I've had another phone call. I'm not sure that that's the proper name of this business out on Lakeville Road.
Oh.
Okay. It was formerly Quality Enamel. It's been, yeah, it's Quality Enamel. It's been vacant for years. Apparently, this bill, this business just moved in there, and was there ever a site plan for this business? Or a zoning compliance form filled out? Was there ever an inspection done? Do they have a handicap bathroom, handicap parking? These are some of the questions that I being asked. They have a dirt parking lot, which we don't allow, so I'm not sure where we stand with that. The other question I was asked, is that an approved driveway? I have to say I don't know, but I'd like to know. Was there a water retention plan done for that property because it butts up to our wetlands? And it's also my understanding that, and what I've been told, is that all the asphalt milling, millings from Tan Lake and some other subdivisions have all been dumped on the rear of that property. Is that not an environmental issue? Because it's got gas, oil, everything else on it?
I can respond to some of those.
Okay.
We have sent our code officer over there, and he has addressed some of the issues regarding the materials and what they were doing in their back property, because there was that expressed to us. I know that was addressed at the time, and there wasn't found anything and any violations at that time, but we'll send the code officer out there again. I will have to double-check. I'm fairly certain there was a zoning compliance form. But it's a rental property. They don't necessarily need to have a site plan, but I will follow up and get any, I don't have the answers today for you. If it's always going to be brought up, I would have to file it. But I will get you the answers and present back to council.
Okay.
But we have been addressing that business and that operation.
All right. Well, I've had three phone calls on it, and so, and also about the property across the street, but it's my understanding that that property's in the township, so I won't go there with that. The sidewalk repair, yes, it looks beautiful out there. But are they going to do all of the areas in the village that are, or just, were they just hired to do this area out in front of the building?
They were, they were, they gave quotes, three other, two other companies to do, behind Centennial Park, that whole row, and here. The other parcels around the village, Don Brantley was going to look at it, whether his crews could do it, or see what kind of a price he might get with this firm. But Don initially was going to address this individual park, this is like an East Burdick, and the ones downtown that he met with Joe Frost on just a few weeks ago.
Right.
So I don't have an answer specifically for you at the moment, because Don's still looking at it.
But if they're doing a bunch of them, and we got three bids, should that not have come to the council?
It's under the, it was five thousand dollars.
It was. Okay. What about the nap property, the nap sidewalk out in front of Naps?
Oh.
I was up there today, and it's...
That, that...
Looks like it's getting worse.
No, that, Don called me, that happens whenever it gets too hot. The bricks expand and they start buckling. And then when it cools down, they go back down. And it does that every year when it gets hot enough.
Okay.
So I'm not sure what we can do. Try to reset them or get a new base or something so that the heat doesn't force them out.
Okay. And my other comment is that I wanted to say, thank you, Susan, for planting the flowers out in the front two flower boxes where the trees were cut down. They look really nice, and they're doing well. And whoever was responsible for having the water sprinklers turned on so that we have green grass out in front of our government building, it looks very nice. So I appreciate that.
Do we get a sewer credit?
Huh?
Do we get a sewer credit?
I don't know.
We don't.
Government...
Do we have a separate meter?
Yes.
We don't have a separate meter for watering either.
I think if you look, there's three or four meters in this building.
Not just directly four.
And with that, I would like to make a motion to enter into closed session to discuss an attorney-client opinion letter related to Village of Oxford management contracts.
And we have a second issue.
No, we have a second issue.
I would actually like to go recess, since we're going to discuss this before a vote.
Well, let's finish the motion. There's two, you have two things for closed session.
Oh, I'm sorry?
One is, is the management contracts, and the other is the...
Ask me.
The ask-me negotiation status.
All right.
We've reached the point where it's time to present that.
I will add that onto my motion.
What we could do is go ahead and get ready for, and take the break as we're heading into closed session.
Okay.
I really think everyone in this room needs cigarettes.
We're going to do that. We're going to do that.
Do I have a second to my motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Basardi, seconded by Dolan. Susan, do you want to do a, we'll call Dolan. Councilmember Kenneth?
Yes.
Councilmember Bema?
Yes.
Councilmember Dolan?
Yes.
President Basardi?
Yes.
Councilmember Helmut?
Yes.
Counselor, we're going to do the ask-me thing first, because we're going to excuse Joe and Susan from the second topic.
Okay. So we need a motion to have a five-minute break.
I'll move to have a five-minute break. Support.
We have a motion by Bema, supported by Helmut, in favor.
Aye.
All same side.